We ready? Good evening, everyone. I like it. Welcome. Thank you all for coming out tonight. We're gonna call the meeting to order by standing for the pledge. I pledge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Alright, thank you all again for coming out tonight. We're gonna start tonight's meeting with our recognition section. And we will start with our intermediate school published students. Welcome, kids.
So I would like to introduce Jill Davis. Jill is our new intermediate school librarian. And she partnered with Casey Filbrick, one of our first grade teachers. But Casey is also the advisor for our literacy club. And they are going to tell you a little bit about some writing that our students here did. And what is going on with that writing?
Thank you. So just to give a little bit of a background, Young Writers is a company that is... They're... They reach out to schools all over the country. And they reached out to us and asked if we wanted to join a contest. It's a writing contest. And the rules for it was is they had to write a short spooky story. It was kind of Halloween themed. And they had to write it in 100 words or less. So Casey and I got together. She was doing the literacy club. I had gotten this invite to join this contest. We combined forces and helped our friends here write a story. The students had to write... Sorry, so I'm really nervous. I'm so used to teaching in front of like little people, so big people are making me very nervous. So, okay, they started with an outline. They had to do an outline. They had to draw pictures. And Casey and I really did very little to help them. They really did a lot of the imagination, the creative writing, the creative thinking. That was all on their own. Really what Casey and I worked on was little stuff like punctuation and some spelling. But the biggest thing that we had to help them with was keeping their story less than 100 words. They wanted to continue writing. They wanted more details. They wanted just to keep going, which really spoke to their creative thinking, their little creative minds, their imagination. It was really impressive. Their stories were phenomenal. Like, I wanted to know more. It was awesome. So Young Writers got back to me and said that out of... They had two contests going at the same time, ours that we entered and another one. And out of the two, they had over 67,000 entries. And our four got picked. We sent in four and all four got selected to get published in a book. So it was pretty awesome, right? Pretty awesome. So with that being said, our four writers here is Kira... Where are you? There you are. Kira, Adeline, Alicia, and Star. And they're just gonna tell you a little bit about what they liked, what they like about literacy club, and some of the things they enjoyed about the story writing. Yeah. Can I take this off? Okay. Maybe.
I know I'm able to, but can I?
The question. Yes, absolutely, sweetheart.
Do I say this?
Yeah. Introduce yourself.
Hi, I'm Star. My favorite part of the story I wrote is where the boy turns into a ghost. And he has to find the book to turn back into a human.
Nice job.
Hi, my name is Alicia. And my favorite part of the book was where the three kids played hide and seek. I'm not reading the rest.
Hi, my name is Kira. My favorite part of literacy club is seeing Miss Filbrick. And my favorite part of my story is writing it and thinking what I should write about next.
Hello, my... Hello, my name is Adeline. I am in fourth grade. My favorite part of my story was when the girl walks into the castle and saw the man with no face.
They were really nervous, so that was really awesome. It's a great... So hold on, don't go anywhere yet. Don't go anywhere yet. So we have a couple things to present to you. So we have certificates for all of them from the Young Writers, the publishers. So Star, can you come up and get yours? Nice job. Kira? There you go. Careful. Adeline? And Alicia? You're welcome.
Yeah, that's awesome. Yeah, thank you for that. And with that, we will move on to our next 2.2, Ashley Ketchman's tenure recommendation.
So tonight, I have the honor of recognizing Ashley Ketchman and recommending her for tenure. And this isn't something that comes easily. We don't tenure everyone. And it takes a really special person who really has touched the lives of our students and is a contributing member of our staff. And I'm very proud to recommend Ashley for tenure tonight. So Ashley began her journey as Sodos Elementary School as a long-term sub for the preschool program in 2020. In the winter of 2021, she was hired full-time. Ashley is a proud mom to five children, two of which we have in the elementary school. She also became a grandma in December. But in her free time, she loves to read and spend time with her family. And as a family, they love taking trips. And Disney is one of their favorite places to visit. Ashley has supported all of our preschool programs over the course of her tenure and her time with us. She's worked in 3PK and 4PK as a teacher's assistant. Ashley, there's just so many things you can say about her. She's a team player. She's always willing to help out. She always makes me smile. She always makes me laugh. You never know what she might say. And it always present... I always have the biggest laugh when she's around. So... But I appreciate her dedication to our students and the role that she plays at Sodos Elementary. So it was with great pleasure that I recommend Ashley Ketchman for tenure.
Okay. Now we'll move on to our reports section. Mr. Steve Spinelli, welcome. You have to follow all that.
I know, that's tough. That's tough. And who doesn't like a nice, exciting facilities report? So, good evening Superintendent Keis and Board of Education. Thank you for giving me... For inviting me to give you an update on the work at the facilities department. I made this PowerPoint in September. So it's gonna be a lot of... A lot of it's kinda skewed towards the summertime. But if I wrote it now, it would be all broken plows and mopping salt off the floor. So it's a little dated. But anyway, our team is comprised of 19 full-time staff, nine of which are evening cleaners, four daytime cleaners and custodians. And the balance are daytime maintenance or ground staff. It is hard to quantify the work that is done daily, weekly, or yearly. But our department put down 137 tons of rock salt and 600 pounds of grass seed last year. Our cleaners clean 280,000 square feet daily. That equates into 257 rooms cleaned nightly for an average of 26 rooms cleaned per cleaner. That doesn't include common areas. The elementary school can be more challenging than parts of the high school. So a cleaner in the elementary school cleans as low as 20 rooms a night. And a cleaner in the high school cleans as many as 33 rooms. Our campus is approximately 17 acres. When all of our equipment is up and running, we can mow the grounds in about three hours. That doesn't include the stadium field. That takes about an hour and 45 minutes. We slow way down and take extra care. It is hard to quantify the amount of cleaning supplies our crew uses annually because we used to purchase on local bid and stockpile supplies. In the last couple years, I've switched to kind of a just-in-time. And, you know, keeping less supplies on hand and buying on the open market. It seems to save money and reduce waste. I was able to find some good numbers for our paper towel we used though last year. We purchased 1,200 cases of paper towel. That's 400 cases per building annually. We completed 530 work orders the past year, though that doesn't begin to count the work done by our department. In fact, while I was writing this in September, the hub on our grass heater sheared off when I left my desk to weld it back on. That is how the work... Much of our work gets done. We listen for radio calls. And if it's a leaking water heater, ripping out and replacing... Ripping out and replacing a vintage 1982 heater, that's what we'll do. That took approximately 60 man-hours and most of our maintenance staff to complete. There are not too many districts that would tackle a job of this size. We're just lucky to have skilled tradespeople working here. If you have any questions throughout this, stop me at... This summer, we did a lot of crack sealing, cold patching, and sealing of asphalt. Again, this work was all done in-house with countless man-hours. We built our own spray rig, hauled our own sealer. Nearly 4,000 gallons of sealer went down. Put down a pallet of crack sealer, hauled and put down all our old cold patch, and painted all the lines. We used to contract out this work. Our total cost this summer was less than one contracted sealing of our stadium asphalt. And that cost us over $20,000. In the summertime, our workforce goes up by about six workers, six summer workers. They, along with cleaners and custodians, deep clean our campus top to bottom. Tim, Stacy, Heather, and Dave take a lot of pride in how the buildings look. While they are deep in the cleaning, they are also supporting summer school, summer academy, ESL, summer rec, and other programs. The picture above is the fieldhouse floor getting a fresh coat of gym seal.
Is that done by machine or...?
Well, we... It takes a couple days. We wet sand it. And so it gets wet-sanded with floor machines. And then that all gets taken out. Make sure you get all the grease off the floor. And then it's put down by hand. You know, Tim Overhart's our gym seal expert.
I like it.
And he puts that down.
Yeah, no. I just like the before and after, that's why I ask.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Comes out really well. The playgrounds were painted and new mulch was put in. We did safety inspections on all the playground equipment and changed out various components as needed. During the summer, our grounds person, Jeremy Kow, paints the fields once a week. It could be up to seven soccer fields and four softball or baseball diamonds to prep and paint. On average, Jer walks five miles and uses 30 gallons of paint to get this done. Prior to this, the ball fields received tons of top dressing. They were tilled, overseeded, and rolled. Throughout the summer, we are constantly filling low spots, tilling and overseeding. And it's all hands' work for most of the maintenance crew. Other work on the grounds this summer included maintaining the drainage behind the elementary school, removing trees near our power lines, trimming trees, and of course, the endless mowing and weed whacking. Along with other HVAC work, we did... HVAC work is a big part of what we do in the summertime. You know, it's when a lot of people aren't here, so we get to tear into it and kinda do our PMs. So along with other HVAC work we did throughout, a thorough PM of our classroom units, rooftop units, and exhaust fans. The units are vacuumed, oiled, checked for defects, new filters installed, and belts if necessary. The coils on our chiller are acid washed, along with other cooling coils throughout the district. We install spot cooling for summer programs where needed. And in the course of a PM, we install about 500 new filters. Some of the other work we did this summer was painting classrooms and offices as needed, prepping High School 222 for the PolyRise grant. That was a lot of wiring prep for that media classroom. We supported homecoming with probably... Ooh, I better catch up there. Support... We supported homecoming with probably the biggest bonfire in Sodos history. Pretty proud of that.
It was windy that night.
Yeah, it was windy.
Rainy, windy?
I don't know if we'll ever do one like that again.
It's alright. It worked.
Since the summer, some of the work we've been doing, we received shipments of new furniture, a ton of new furniture. And for our classrooms throughout the campus, so far, we've received over 2,500 items and the facilities crew assembled hundreds of tables, desks, and chairs. Our custodians have been working with building administration to coordinate removing old furniture and moving appropriate furniture in its place. Some other work that we've been... That we continue to work on, we cleared trees behind the facilities building. There was a huge cottonwood that was butted up against our power lines and the fiber optic cable. And it was rotted. It was probably a 40-inch round or a 50-inch round. And we contracted to have that removed. But that gave us the opportunity to clear all that wood from behind the facilities building and really clear out the power lines. So an added benefit of that was it improved the drainage behind that building as well, which we've always had problems with. So some of the goals that we... I have for this year are, you know, which is now we're into, which is prepping equipment for grounds and snow removal. We've now prepped snow removal equipment and broken most of it. But continue to improve our stadium and ball fields. We work on that every year. Improve campus signage. A lot of that's getting kinda old and weathered. Continue working on our partnerships with the town, the village, the fire department, local law enforcement, other partners such as Reliant or Patents or... And local farmers. We do, you know... I don't think we could do what we could do without them. Increase the utility and functionality of some of our large service contracts. And we spent a lot of money on service contracts for our elevators, HVAC, fire protection. And it's nice to try to get your money's worth out of them. So that's an ongoing struggle. Some other of our day-to-day work is we have a centralized shipping and receiving now at our facilities building. So we collect packages and distribute them out to the buildings. We, you know, we pick up trash around the grounds. We set up and tear down events, clean the cafeterias, mowing, shoveling, and plowing, building locks and keys. Lisa is our lock and key person. So far this year, she's handed out over... Or issued over 170 keys. And we do a lot of maintaining compliance with AHIRA, DOH, SED, annual fire inspections, boiler inspections, and playground inspections. Some of the other day-to-day work we do is, you know, cleaning and sanitizing of the... All campus spaces. You know, Tim is our vacuum cleaner, repair guy, auto scrubbing the hallways. This time of year, it's a struggle to get the salt off the floors. You know, replacing lights and maintaining sight lighting. We do a lot of that with our aging infrastructure for the lighting. And then just one other picture of the turf repair in front of the high school from the summer. That came out kinda nice. I thought I'd finish with that. But that's it.
Hold on. Don't go anywhere. So I just wanna thank you 'cause like you showed that last picture of the turf repair. And I... Over the summer, you could just see the difference. You know, when school started, you guys did an amazing job bringing the campus back to life. Like, the way it looked, the grass was amazing. Down by the primary school on the end there, you guys had our roped office. Everybody parks as close as they can to whatever's going on. Or our lack of parking out front, people pull off the side. And you're constantly battling that and make... You do an amazing job. Your team does an amazing job keeping things looking nice, and I thank you for that. I brag about... We were talking about facilities and other places. And you came up in a conversation with a group of friends. And I was telling them how like we're fortunate that you're that guy that's not gonna cut the corner when you're doing a job. You're gonna make sure like if you're supposed to use a 2x4, you're at least doing that or a 2x6, you know? So I appreciate that as well. With all the guys you have on, how much like outside... How many outside contractors? How much of outside contractors do you use like in your day-to-day services? And like, where are you lacking there? Is there skill sets that you're looking for or that you're... Would help be more beneficial?
Yeah, back... We were a much larger department back in the day. And we had an onsite... We had our own electrician. And we were more... We had a lot of trades... More tradespeople at that... In fact, at that time, we did a lot of more construction, but...
Are you able to do your own electrical work within-house? Like, you guys are...
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. Dave and Adam are maintenance mechanics, myself, you know? You know, we do a lot of that. We wired up.
Electrical, the plumbing, all of those.
Yeah, absolutely. Well-rounded, well-rounded. But we do, of course, we bring in a lot of outside contractors.
The bigger jobs.
You know, a lot of the HVAC stuff, our boilers, you know, you can't even work on it unless you know the code to get in the program, you know?
Electrics.
So it's all new. It's all... So that's a phone call. You know, the tree work, we're not gonna... We're not gonna take down a 70-foot tree. Overhead doors, you know, stuff like that, we call, we call. But I think we do the vast majority in-house.
Awesome.
Yeah.
Well, thank you for that. Appreciate it.
Oh, sure.
Yeah, Steve, before you go, you know, Jason, you brought up a good point about the use of outside contractors. And, you know, I don't think that there's much that we've asked you about that you and your folks haven't been willing to take on, you know? Which is pretty amazing. And I think the one thing that I admire and appreciate most of you and your crew is just your ability just to get things done. No matter how dirty, no matter, you know, how difficult it is, you guys figure out a way to tackle it. And you do it with pride. And that's the one thing that I think I've noticed most about you and your people is that you really care about our facilities and our... All of our employees here. And you really go above and beyond to make sure that you do everything you can to make their jobs easier. And I think that's why we obviously have one of the best facilities department around. And that's as a result of your leadership, so thank you.
Thank you very much. I gotta say that the crew that we have now is beyond a doubt, you know, the best crew that I've had here. Real just... I wouldn't be here without them. So, really appreciate them.
Quick question, Steve. With the weather being cold and snowy out and miserable, every time the weather turns, I always get the phone call from my mother-in-law, of course. The walking program that you usually allow people to come in and walk inside the schools, is that not... We're not doing that anymore? Is that something that we haven't started?
Yeah.
Is it? Okay.
Yeah, yeah.
I'll let her know.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thanks, Steve.
You're welcome.
And just before we start the Eureka Math Squared, I have to say, I've worked in a variety of districts over the course of my 23 years in education, and this facilities department is one of the best I've ever seen. I beg Steve, I plead with him, please never move Dave List out of the elementary school. That man is a gem. It's amazing the work they do, so they are just an asset to our whole community. And Jeff, they are starting walking at the elementary schools starting tomorrow morning. But now we're going to talk some math, so I'm going to turn it over to Megan.
Yes, so at the, I think the July board meeting, we had first presented our math data for pre-K through sixth, and now that we've gone through a year and now about four months of our implementation of Eureka Math Squared, we wanted to update you on some more of our math data. Uh-oh. There we go. So this slide has not changed from July, so why do we assess? All right. Essentially, assessments are for us to be able to, our classroom teachers, to be able to look at and see, how are we going to continue having these students learn? Do we need to intervene if they're not understanding? It's all about making those instructional decisions. So effective assessment is embedded right into the instruction, and the kids know exactly what they need to do, and then it's used in order to decide intervention groupings, enrichment, reteaching, pre-teaching, things such as that.
So there's a variety of assessments that, and again, this slide is the same one that we did in July, but there's a variety of assessments that teachers use. At the UPK through second grade level, there's observational assessments, and that can be either interview style or observed throughout the module and throughout the teaching. And then there's also paper-based assessments in first and second grade, and computer-based beginning in third grade. Those are the formal assessments, but there's also what the teachers are seeing, anecdotal notes, what they're observing throughout the time with the students as they continue to move through the unit. Again, the standards are embedded within the achievement descriptors, so an achievement descriptor can include one or more multiple standards. And so again, this is a spiral curriculum, so we expect them to be proficient at the end of the year. And there's four to five levels of scoring. Highly proficient, proficient, partially proficient, and not yet is for our UPK kindergarten, first and second grade students, and then inconsistently proficient is applied starting in third grade. So this was something new that I wanted to add in. So scoring for first and second grade, this is a snapshot, I believe, from first grade I took at the end of their module. So you can see that each item number is on the far left column, that there's two achievement descriptors within that one item on the assessment, and then how many points that the student can earn for the total number at the end. So teachers work, last year, we were very thankful and fortunate to have Dr. Bonnie Kaser and Mrs. Tina Ford as our math coaches in both buildings, and really, we did, the teams did great at working collaboratively to score, and they continue to do so this year as well, when they are potentially stuck on a problem or need some guidance, they really work collaboratively. So what they do is they score the assessment, and then you can find over in the right-hand side, they find the average, and then it will give you a number between zero and four, and that tells the range. So I have the range that's there for each color that we'll see in the next charts moving forward. So these are also, you can think of these as comparable to the 1, 2, 3, 4 that we use on the report card. Highly proficient is a 3.7 to a 4. That would be equivalent to like a 4 on our report card of exceeding expectations. Proficient, they're meeting expectations, and then partially proficient would be maybe that 2 where they're working towards it, they're not consistent, but they are showing progress and some mastery from time to time.
So once they reach third grade and through sixth, when they're taking the assessments online, this is where that inconsistently proficient is added in. So it's scored a little bit differently, where you're going to see your typical numbers, 0 through 100. And so if you take a look at the bands, you know, you can see that the highly proficient, you really have to be really, really mastering everything as you are doing. There's very little room for error. And then if you take a look at the partially proficient, I really want to point that one out because, and it will become important as we're doing the data. If you take a look at the partially proficient, if a student scores anywhere between a 36 to a 69 on their assessment, then they are partially proficient. That is a huge, over 30-point band. And so I will talk a little bit more about that when we get to the intermediate school data and how we're using some of that information to be able to inform our instruction. And again, just to reiterate, the way that we use the assessment data to plan intervention and win time to reteach concepts to students, as well as to see which students might need to have some enrichment.
So we're going to kick off with the elementary data. So first up, we have first grade. So first grade is the first grade level where they start having module assessments that's not just observational. So this first module was counting, comparison, and addition, and you can see that by just the amount of blue that's in that pie chart, how well the kids did on this assessment. The first grade team works diligently together to plan and really make sure that the kids are getting what they need. So that was really great to see. First grade has also completed Module Two, which was addition and subtraction relationships. Now in kindergarten, they do start teaching subtraction, but it gets more complex as they get into first grade. So while we had more partially proficient, we still had almost half of the grade level being in that highly proficient or proficient range, which is great to see. In second grade, second grade is very unique, that their first module is extensively long, so it's divided into Part One and Part Two. And so they did Part One, which was place value concepts through metric measurement and data, which is daunting even to hear that name of that module. But again, our students were, are doing really well compared to where they were last year when this was first introduced, because they now are in year two and have that foundation. So they did a great job on that. And then you'll notice that this is the first time that they got, we got into the not-yet category with some origin there, but it was place value, counting, and comparing within 1,000. So that is, you can see that the level of rigor has increased tremendously as they continue through those modules. In third grade, you'll notice that there is the shift then, so that now we have the inconsistently proficient. And so as Megan said, that's, that very large band that's within there, I'm sorry, that's the partially proficient. Inconsistently is between a 70 and a 79. So anything in the blue, the shades of blue or that light yellow, are 70 and above, which is a good chunk of the third grade cohort. And that was multiplication and division with units of 2, 3, 4, 5, and 10. It's also important to remember that this is a spiraled curriculum, so again, mastery is expected at the end of the year, not within each module. So concepts are continually spiraled back to whether it's through the fluency or other activities throughout. Also in third grade, we do start testing online. Great Minds has a great online component, and our third graders take their quizzes and their module assessments on the computer. So third grade, Module Two data was place value concepts through metric measurement, and again, it's, the rigor is there, it's a higher-level thinking. So while our students did not do as well as we had seen in other grade levels, they still did a really nice job with working on this. And again, this was finished up right before the Christmas break. So this summer, during our team leader retreat, we talked about our different math assessments and the math data we were collecting, and we really only had the module assessments and our I-R-A-D-I data, and looking at what else we could use to get some benchmark assessment data in as well, to get more data points. So Benchmark Advance does offer the benchmark assessments, which in first grade and third grade come after Module Two. For second grade, the first one comes after Module One because it is so extensively long. So this was the first time we've given the benchmark assessments, and so this data shows what the students retained from Module One and Module Two. It was a process. It was something new. I believe, if I'm remembering correctly, it took, the first graders, it took about four days. The first grade team did a great job of chunking it into small chunks so that it was manageable for the students. And then when we look at, whoops, when we look at our second grade data, I could not be more proud of this, looking at how much blue was there. So that covered Part One of the module, their benchmark. The second grade team has done a great job making sure that our students are getting what they need, using their data to drive their win time. So it was just great to see these results. And then when we get into Part Two, again, they did really well. It was, for second and third grade, the benchmark assessment was a two-day assessment. The way that it lined up, it fell right before the Christmas holiday, and so that was a little tricky, keeping everyone on task and focused. But again, our students did really well, and they persevered through the two-day assessment with the help of their teachers and other staff. And then here's our third grade data. I love to point out that there was no one in the not-yet range. Everyone was in that, those ranges that were making really good significant growth, and 80% of our students were in the 100 to 70 range. And then Part Two of the benchmark assessment for third grade. Any questions on the elementary data at this point? Okay.
So before I start going over the intermediate school data, I do want to let you know that you will not see benchmark data for us quite yet. I'm going to be meeting with the math team. We do not really midterms, we don't call them, we call them parallel assessments to give the students before February break, an experience that is similar to state testing so they can build their stamina for that. And so we're going to be taking a look at some of the benchmarks for fourth, fifth, and sixth to see if that would be an appropriate way to do our parallel assessments. So stay tuned on that. So for the intermediate school, this is fourth grade, and again, I really want to reiterate what Jackie said as well, that our teachers and school staff have really done a great job continuing to implement Eureka Math Squared, using the data that they're getting to inform their instructional groupings and to figure out how to best support our students. So kudos to all of them for really staying the course. So if you take a look, on my slides, I want to draw some attention particularly to the partially proficient, which is that large band that goes anywhere from 36 to 69. So Module One, place value concepts for addition and subtraction in fourth grade. We had 40 students who were in the partially proficient range. 29 of them scored between a 65 and a 69. So remember, that partially proficient is 36 to 69. But if we're looking at 65 to 69, we can really see, who are those kiddos who really like won question, or even, you know, a point more on a multi-point question could have gotten them into the next band? We often refer to them as like the bubble, the kids who are on the bubble. So those who might be able to, you know, go on a state test from a 1 to a 2, a 2 to a 3, a 3 to a 4. And so that way, you can see why weren't they able to get to 70. They were so close. And you can really dig into that. Is it really that they didn't understand the concept? Did their fingers slip and they pressed the wrong button on the computer? It could be a variety of reasons, and so that way, we can really dig into that. So 73% of our students that were in the partially proficient were between a 65 and a 69. For the Module Two data, where they're still in place value concepts, but now we're in multiplication and division, out of the 24 students who are in that partially proficient range, 12, so exactly 50% of them, scored between a 65 and a 69. So again, right, so, so close to being into the inconsistently proficient. If we take a look at Module One for fifth grade, so out of that, we had 54% of our total student population in fifth grade were partially proficient. That means it was 33 students, and of those 33, 14%, or 4, excuse me, 14 of them, or 42%, scored between a 65 and a 69. And then for Module Two, out of the 28 students who are partially proficient, 16 of them are 57% scored between a 65 and a 69. One of the things you're going to see in our, our steps about, you know, what we're doing in the future, where we're going, is at fifth grade, we have a teacher who is brand-new to our district, and also a teacher who, while last year she taught in a different grade level, is new to the fifth grade. So myself, Tina Ford, our math coach, and those two teachers were actually able to meet today for the full day, and we really dove into a lot of the things that people who were with us last year would have learned through the different professional developments and training with the math program, and we were really able to take a look at data, take a look at lessons, and really see how they can use that for intervention times to help the kids keep moving along.
Megan, just a quick...
Yeah, absolutely.
All right. Do you have numbers for, how many students are in the not-yet for Modules One and Two on that fifth grade?
In my office? So, so what I can do is I have a board update next week, so if you, if you would like for my board update, I can actually break down what those percentages, how many students out of the total grade level that is.
That's what I, I mean, we're looking at, we're looking at percentage numbers, and that bubble is huge.
Absolutely.
But it could be five kids.
Exactly, absolutely. So yes, I can absolutely do that on my board update. I did not bring it with me, so I apologize for that, but I will make sure that you guys get that next Thursday. So if we take a look now at our Module One in sixth grade, so that's when they get into ratios, rates, and percents, and kudos to them because that is, they start with it right in the beginning of the year, and it is a bear. And as you can see, we had, you know, 40% of our students already came in, and at the end of that, they were in the blue, so either the proficient or highly proficient range. If we take a look at the partially proficient, out of the 22 students that were partially proficient, 15 of them are 68% scored between a 65 and a 69. And then for Module Two in sixth grade, which again, everyone finished Module Two in December, right before the break, operations with fractions and multi-digit numbers are partially proficient students. It was 21 of them, 16 of them are 76% scored between a 65 and a 69. And what is really good about, we can look right at the data on the Great Minds Eureka Math Module Assessment websites, and we can see like how we can, it breaks everything down into smaller components, so we can see exactly where each student is having some real success and may have already mastered or almost mastered what it is that they were being assessed on, and we can also see the very specific areas where they're struggling and where we might need to do some additional work during our intervention times. So one more, moving forward.
So you'll see that we have moving forward versus next steps, because we have many of these things already in place. After we reflected after the, our first year of implementation, after we reflected on our first year of implementation, there were things that we needed to put in place. Something that's not up there, and I want to speak to, is the collaboration of our teachers and staff. This is truly a group effort to get everything prepared for the Benchmark Advance, I'm sorry, for the Eureka Math Squared, whether it comes down to manipulative prep, getting the right number of bears counted out for an activity, all the way to planning and looking at assessments. It's collaboration through and through, and our teams do a great job at that. We are very fortunate that through some luck and Mr. Roskup, we were able to keep, have Kathy McCarthy become a .5 math coach for our building, and Kathy is a godsend, and we are so thankful for that. Kathy started coaching cycles that have started with our team leaders, and she's moving on to the next groups of individuals. We've done, as I said, we did the benchmark assessments. We're also going to do them in June, and then we do continue to review our data at the Tier One level monthly. Any questions about moving forward for the elementary school? Any questions about moving forward for the elementary school?
So the benchmark assessments, you said something earlier that I found a little, I don't know, four days for benchmark assessments for certain grades and then two for?
It was only because they divided into small chunks so that it was manageable for the students, so they did what was in best interest of the students.
How much do we get out of that? Because it seems like four days of school is a lot. That's a whole week.
It was about twenty minutes at a time.
Okay.
So it was really a smaller amount.
Because I'm more concerned about the time that we're spending checking to see where the students are at as opposed to actually teaching the students.
No, I agree. I understand what you're saying. It was our first time giving it. We weren't sure what to expect with it, how long it would actually take the students. And that wasn't the entire group of students. That was some of the students that took more days than others.
So this is something that we're not going to be doing a lot of in the future then?
We're doing it January and June.
Okay.
At this point.
So then again, I've already spoken about most of this, but moving forward for the intermediate school, we did that just today, that full-day PD with administration and our coach Tina Ford for our newer math teachers. We also do data review at our weekly team meetings as well as quarterly data days. We will be looking at those benchmark assessments for a midterm skills check as well as ongoing professional development that my math department chair, Tammy Sweeney, myself and the, and the coach Tina Ford, as well as some of our folks from the elementary school, have been able to engage in. That happens every, roughly every two months or so. And then we can turnkey that back to, back to our math teachers. Any questions for the intermediate school?
Just to piggyback on what Eric was saying earlier, when we get this information, can we do both actual numbers and percentages that we don't have to ask the same question?
Absolutely. So I will do that on my board update, but then moving forward as we, as we do this presentation, we can absolutely do that.
So I have a question. When we're looking at the data, I always wonder in the back of my mind how the numbers are skewed due to like chronic absenteeism or ENL barriers or for whatever reason. That also brings up the question of, are there students that are withheld from this information for any certain reason? Like is there, like out of the seventy students in one grade level, are there five that just, their data's not in here because they weren't here?
No.
They came late?
Nope. So unless they truly did not take the exam because of chronic absenteeism, like they have not been in school, like, I mean, because our teachers make every effort, you know, a kiddo's absent on a day, they're going to make it up. You know, they're, but the, the online component of it also is available in alternate languages. So our students who come in who speak either mostly or all Spanish right now, they actually take the assessment in Spanish.
Okay.
And so it's the exact same questions and everything, but we're able to get that same data in their first language. Anything else?
No, thank you.
All right, thank you.
We will move on to our public participation. I will go over the, our criteria for, for public participation real quick. Speakers may use the public participation period to express their viewpoints to the board. You're speaking to the board. If you wish to address the board on a matter not listed on the agenda, the board reserves the right to hold a comment until next scheduled meeting. Your presentation should be as brief as possible, but no more than four minutes. If you sign up for the first public forum but do not get the opportunity to speak during the first public forum, your name will be moved to the head of the second public forum. All speakers must conduct themselves in a civil manner. Any obscene language or threats or statements advocating racial, religious, or other forms of prejudice and shouting will not be tolerated. To protect the privacy of individual students, statements concerning personnel and confidential student matters are prohibited. During the public forum, the president of the board will not reply to comments or questions expressed by members of the public. The president shall direct members of the public with specific personal complaints to the district's policy regarding public complaints. The president shall rule a speaker out of order if a speaker exceeds the individual time allowance of four minutes, acts in a uncivil manner, or uses inappropriate language. Yeah, so we will begin. We will start with Brenda Wren. Welcome, Brenda.
Before I begin, I want to say that my name is Brenda Wren and I am the SOTUS Faculty Association President. I want you to know I represent over one hundred twenty unit members. I am, I am here on behalf of our union. I did not organize this. This is not a Brenda Wren thing. It is a we thing. I stand before you tonight on behalf of many who cannot speak for themselves. I have been the unit president for a number of years and have had the benefit of having an open dialogue with our administrative team. This has not changed, but the landscape of education has. And we cannot continue to live in a state of insanity, doing the same thing and expecting different results. When I started in education twenty-eight years ago, it was dramatically different. First of all, it was simply more fun. Teaching has and always will be stressful, but my principal never once pressed me about the state writing test that my students would take that spring. He let me teach and build relationships with my kids. I was far from a great or perfect teacher, but he trusted me to figure things out, offered support when needed, and let me find my way. Students have also changed along with society since I started teaching. More students come to us with chronic mental health needs or ACEs, adverse childhood experiences, and at a younger age. Trying to get them to learn in a traditional public school setting is a disservice to them and the students who are able to learn in a more typical classroom setting. I have been meeting with the district every month since I have been the unit president and we have spoken at length about the disruption caused by students who struggle to regulate themselves. And yet despite any efforts between us, no real solutions creating positive change for our staff and students has transpired. Instead, it feels like the teacher is just placed under more pressure to fix everything. Currently, just getting students to come to school can be a struggle. We have elementary-age students missing up to a quarter or a third of a given school year and get passed on to the next grade level. How does this show that we have high expectations? How are teachers supposed to fill such a gap? What happens when they get to high school where they have to pass classes and tests to graduate? And sadly, when they're here, some of them, it's very hard to get them to do their actual work. I know I am showing my age again, but I would never have thought of telling a teacher no when they made a reasonable request. This is a common occurrence with students in our classrooms today. The way that educators are spoken to or even how our student population speaks amongst one another is quite a culture change from even just ten years ago. I have witnessed firsthand the inconsiderate way staff has been spoken to by some of our students or times when students completely disregard or give attitude over a simple request like putting away their phone or moving to us to sit at a desk away from another student. It is more common than you realize. In a world with smartphones and more instability outside of school, it is no wonder that those of us trying to teach our students are often unable to climb over that mountain. When assessment scores come out and the passing rate or the level is not where we want it to be, instead of really tackling the root cause, our unit members are pushed to do more and often made to feel like we are not doing enough. The reality is that if our focus is mainly around performance instead of having clear purpose and values that will improve the academic culture of our school and truly support our staff and students, we will not have any lasting change. Our vision statement, "Learning, Advancing Proud," is not being realized. Learning is about so much more than test results, performance, and value rates. Advancing should be about moving forward as an academic institution and growing academics that is appropriate for the age and grade level of our kids. Being proud should mean that we feel satisfied with our accomplishments and have pleasure in being a part of this school community, which is sadly, not always the case. In the most recent district newsletter, do you want me to stop? I have a little more to go. I'd really like to finish.
Don't finish up.
Thank you. In the most recent district newsletter mailing, the four pillars from the strategic plan we referenced, and listed at number two was employee experience. The current conditions that we are working in do not enhance the employee experience. The teaching shortage is real and without competitive wages, we will not attract people to fill these positions or may not get the best that is out there. Just continuing to post them is not enough. We are struggling to retain teachers. I took the list of new teachers when I started as staff developer in 2018 and seventy-nine percent of the year one and two teachers have left the district. The reasons vary, but the percentage is still staggering. Recently, we have had tenure teachers leave us, which used to be uncommon. They were committed staff members but left because they did not feel supported by leadership and/or did not find the culture of our school to be a positive one. It is not always about proximity or pay. For those of us who remain, other than a standard salary raise and maintaining health benefits, we have not had one perk. Our classes, particularly in the high school, are not always well-balanced. We are staffing to enrollment instead of to need. This is a trend that has persisted for years, long before current administration. Given the conditions of our work, this is causing more work for all of us. And yet we come to work, even help with lesson plans for folks who are out, take on classes that are not ours, and more. We lose classroom support due to the substitute shortage and take on work that we are not supposed to be doing. The educational community is a caring and generous group and I am grateful to be a part of it, but we are an exhausted community and our work should be a more positive experience. It should not have to be so hard to get it right. I stand before you today imploring you to help us. I assure you, we are not a bunch of petty, greedy, whining, complaining individuals as I know some of you sitting here think we are. We want to feel valued and appreciated through action, not words. The budget season is upon us and I hope that you as a school board will take a hard look at our staffing, how to provide instruction for students who need alternative ways to learn, and how to bring financial and/or other benefits to our staff to show their value. Despite what you may hear, we are needed and we do necessary work that cannot be replicated by just anyone. This cannot happen between the SFA and the district alone. We've worked and we've tried. I think we are both feeling stretched, exhausted, and a bit unsure about what would work best. Therefore, I would like to request a private meeting with the school board and myself to share more specifically what I have referenced this evening. I look forward to hearing from one of you soon to schedule a time to do that. I will close with something I heard at last month's board meeting. A student was presenting about third-grade student council and said something about wanting to make SOTUS amazing. And really, that's what we all want. I hope we can work together to bring our school back to a school of distinction where people want to come to work. So let's dare to lead, take some action, and do something outside of the ordinary to make it happen, instead of staying stalled in the current state we've been in for what feels like the last ten years, basically doing the same thing over and over again but expecting different results. Thank you.
Rob Shute, you're next.
Good evening. My name is Rob Shute. Last month, there were several community members expressing their outrage about suggested changes to the volunteer policy. The board members seemed prepared to vote on acceptance of the policy change until public comments were heard. It was interesting to me that the crux of the change was to exclude volunteers who had a child on the athletic team they would be assisting. The stated concern was the potential for favoritism to take place due to the parent-child relationship or even merely the appearance of favoritism. From where I sat, it seemed the board was prepared to approve the change policy until it was tabled due to the public comments that were shared. Members of the Board of Education serve as volunteers. If board members were in favor of this volunteer policy change because they wanted to eliminate the chance or appearance of favoritism, it seems it would follow that a similar logic could be applied to those volunteering to serve on the Board of Education. I mean, I'm sure none of you have family members in the school district. I'm sure none of your decisions could affect your family members who work in the district. I'm sure your decisions are not at all influenced by having family members working in the district. I'm sure none of you have children as students in the district that could affect the decisions you make or the topics you discuss. I'm sure your children are not treated better than other children because their mom or dad is a school board member. I'm sure your kid's discipline is the same as it would be for any student. Or is it? Are these things really happening or do they happen? If you're concerned with actual or potential favoritism with volunteers in district athletics and plan to pass the policy change, perhaps you should lead by example and not be hypocritical by serving on the school board as a volunteer while having family members and/or children in the district.
Hello, my name is Brooke Wilson. I'll start it this way. I am a volunteer. I don't just simply do it to do it. I do it because I care about our community and children's futures. I take pride in the opportunity, just like you all do, to volunteer to be board members. Athletic volunteers are required to undergo trainings that require out-of-pocket expenses that a typical volunteer by definition does not require. Keep in mind, we must also be board-approved. You guys make that decision. We as volunteers do not just simply call the school and say we want to volunteer. We spend our own money and time, put miles on our vehicles, give up professional opportunities because staying, staying late at work isn't an option due to a game or practice, et cetera. At the end of the day, these are just some of the sacrifices we make. Though these sacrifices, sacrifices don't matter because we as volunteers all do it because we want to, because we care. As a volunteer coach, we teach kids how to be part of something bigger than themselves, how to work, how to communicate, how to win, how to lose, how to lead. As a former student here at SOTUS Central, I am so grateful for the volunteer coaches I had, one being my dad, who, mind you, was always harder on me than other athletes. No favoritism there. Coaches helped to shape me to be the successful human being I am today. I will never forget the lifetime impact my coaches had on me, both volunteer and paid. I was always so proud to be a graduate of SOTUS Central, but it surely seems a lot has changed and not in a positive way. I really hope you all understand the negative impact approving this will have, not only for our current students but the future of all, all of our athletic programs. I ask you as a board to kindly consider your decision regarding policy number 3150, School Volunteers.
Thank you, Brooke. So we will move on to matters for board discussion. First up is policy 3150. So I will start by saying that after our last board meeting, we made a, we made a commitment to digest the information that we received from the community. We, I know I thought a lot about it. I think it's still important to have, have some criteria that we need to follow, some things that we need to do within the district, but I don't know if we necessarily need to go ahead with the whole policy that we were initially stating. I don't know how you guys feel.
As far as the policy, we, we decided to include that policy in a little bit of haste because of circumstances. After considering, after... After considering, after thinking about it, and obviously having the public come in and speak, I don't actually want the policy in place banning volunteers. I know a lot of volunteers that have done real good for the community. I have volunteered. Obviously, we should have some parameters as far as who is allowed to volunteer. But as far as not allowing any volunteers, I don't disagree, I don't agree with the policy. Like I said, we didn't have any policy at all, so obviously, we needed to come up with something, because otherwise, how can you measure who is allowed to coach or assist a coach if you don't have anything to follow? Does that make sense? So since then, we have created a way to measure who's qualified and who should be a volunteer coach. And with that new, those new policies, I think it seems to me like we should allow volunteer coaches, because it just makes sense. I've done it myself, and a lot of the people that I know have done a tremendous job, and like stated here in the past, they do it in their own free time, their own money, and for the love of coaching. So that's my opinion.
I just, I agree with you there, Jeff. You know, we're looking at this, you know, strengthen school-community relationship through positive participation. SOTUS is a very small community. We are. And going back to, right, volunteers, most of the volunteers is because we have kids in the district, or playing in a sport, or here. So if we ban that, we won't have anybody. So I agree, we need to come up with something in place, more vetting to go through, and I think we've come up with something along those lines, but we can't, we can't ban family members, or we won't have anybody helping. That's my take.
I really appreciate it hearing from everyone last month. It was nice to see the public at a board meeting, regardless of what the topic was. I think it was great to hear that feedback. And whatever decision is made, I hope more feedback continues. It's nice to see it tonight as well. I know there's a lot of, "Nobody listens," and "I don't know why I say anything." It does make a difference, even if it's not the outcome that you're looking for. We need to hear that type of feedback. So that's a general comment. As far as policy 3150, I think it's fair to say there is no easy blanket solution to this. Either way of what we decide, there's going to be people who like it, and there's going to be people who don't like it. It's been a big topic of discussion for us in executive session. I don't want anybody to think we're going into this lightly. It's a big topic. Like Eric said, it's a small community. Many of us are impacted by this. So yes, I just want to thank everyone for their feedback, and let you know that regardless of the decision, it is listened to.
Nelson, do you have any, anything to add, anything that you think you can?
Oh, absolutely. Thank you. You know, first of all, I just want to make sure, just for the public, that we're really clear on what this really impacted. This only applied originally to volunteer assistant coaches. This had no implication to any other volunteer in the school, like going on trips, or any of those kind of things. It had no impact on that. It was just the volunteer assistant coaches. But after the meeting last time, I had a chance, I spent a lot of time working on this with Mike Megan, our athletic director, and, you know, it's clear that we want to make sure that we're vetting folks properly, that we get the right people in that are going to be good fits for our program, and also that we have a good way to monitor all of our volunteer assistant coaches. Once again, this is only athletics, volunteer assistant coaches. That's the only thing that this is about. So we put together just what I'm going to call is volunteer assistant coach approval procedures. I talked to our attorney a little bit about this, and if we move away from the policy that's on the agenda that we presented, our volunteer policy would remain the same. There would be absolutely no changes to that. We wouldn't have to do anything. It's already in place. That remains as it is. What the recommendation would be is these procedures would then go in our athletic handbook. There'd be no reason for us to have to develop a specific policy for this. So it's really pretty simple. You know, how Mike and I envision it is if anyone was interested in being a volunteer assistant coach, you know, they would certainly work with their athletic director and the coach of the team that they were interested in volunteering in. Our athletic director would take sole responsibility for vetting that particular person, checking applications, meeting with him and her, what's their philosophy, have they met all of the actual requirements that are required to be a volunteer assistant coach? You have to be certified as a coach to be able to do that, to talk about them being a good fit for the program, and to discuss their candidacy. If the athletic director and the coach both believe that that person would be suitable to be a volunteer assistant coach, the athletic director would then, you know, let me know, because that would be the next step in the process for any applicant for any position here in the district. You know, so assuming that person is recommended forward, then I would follow the same procedure that we do for any other hires in the district. If we wanted that person to start prior to the next board meeting where that person would be formally approved, I could issue what's called an emergency conditional appointment. We do that with a number of appointments throughout the district, so that would be the same process that we have. I would do that, and then that person would go on the agenda at the next board meeting for a formal approval. The other thing that we would do within that procedure would be, this is something new. At the end of the season, the athletic director and the coach would actually meet with that person to hold a year-end review, a season-end review, to talk about how it went, how things, you know, to do that kind of an evaluation. The other thing that Mike and I did was, this would be brand-new as well, we actually put together an actual form that outlines assistant coach, volunteer assistant coach expectations and procedures. It goes through the core expectations of the position, hit social media, you know, providing a safe environment, all of those pieces, and it also goes through the evaluation process, and then an acknowledgement and agreement where each volunteer assistant coach would actually sign off on this document, you know, prior to actually starting in that position. So I feel really good about it. You know, I think that it tightens down the procedures, it makes the expectations and how that process is going to work very, very clear moving forward. So if that's something that the board would like to do, because it's a procedure, we can put this in place immediately, you know, if that's something the board would like to do.
Go ahead, Brian.
Yeah, I would support that. Obviously, we've had a chance to read those procedures, and they had already provided some feedback, but I do like the fact that it did seem apparent to me that after some of the occurrences that we've had with some of our sports teams, the frequency and the seriousness of some of it, that we did need to tighten up and make sure that there was somebody really responsible, or assistant director probably, for vetting and deciding, you know, who's, you know, who's in front of our kids in charge of the sports teams. Again, I provided some of this feedback already, but like the only part of the procedures that, like, I was uncertain of is, you know, first of all, if Mike or you have reason to think that you may have to deny an applicant, or have a concern about them, that I would want brought up with us, which is on there. But I don't think that we need to, I guess, sort of manage the, like, the hiring process, you know, more than, you know, more than we are. We see these names for approval. So there did seem, at least in a quick reading for me, a, you know, an item that had us kind of like notified in advance to pre-approve for you guys, the people that you wanted to put on the approval list. I don't really see a need for that. It's just not normally a part of the hiring process that we are involved in the management of that that much. If the majority of the board wants to see that, I'm not opposed to it. I don't think it's much more work for us if I don't have a strong opinion about a candidate, then it wouldn't take much of my time anyways, but yeah, it just didn't seem like the normal, healthy way of hiring or bringing on people.
Yeah, I personally do appreciate it. I see that sometimes you'd show up, and parents are like, "Who's this guy?" You know, they just don't know, because it might not be somebody within the community. It's happened before, and sometimes it's easy just to already have the answer. Like, if you, if it's not on, if you didn't already have the meeting to approve, it's not on a public document, and we don't know about it, and somebody's just kind of showing up. So it's, to me, it's like a teacher just starting to work. We didn't officially hire them, you know, for the pre-approval, but if it's on the board agenda, then Nelson and Mike, I mean, it's on the agenda, we're just going to approve them just like any other. It wouldn't be a special invite that way. Right? Am I wrong there? Okay. All right, so it looks like we're just going to go ahead with that, then, Nelson?
So what we would do then is, you know, it sounds like the board has decided that they would remove 3150, that policy would remain as-is, and then I'd work with Mike Megan to actually include what I just described into our athletic handbook, and I'll talk to Mike about that. Regina, is there anything formally that we need to do? There's not, correct? Okay. All right. Yeah, thank you.
Do you guys have anything on the 5661 wellness policy? Do you guys have any questions on that? All right, Jeff?
I just want to confirm the wellness, just want to verify, it doesn't apply to any clubs or after-school organizations, correct? Like, as far as, from what I read, it's encouraged, but it's not required that they provide, like, healthy meals and things like that. The reason why I ask, because obviously, they sell hot dogs and popcorn at games, and that's, obviously, you're not going to sell anything if you're selling good stuff.
Yeah, it's very specific during the school day versus outside of school, Jeff.
Also, sorry. I had time to read it, so. As far as water in the cafeteria, is there water in the cafeteria? In the high school cafeteria? Is there, like, a water fountain or anything? Because I don't, how do you, like, if I'm thirsty and I'm a kid and I want water, how do I, like, I got to come out of the cafeteria?
I mean, I know, I know we have the bottle fillers in the hallway in terms of, are you talking, like, water for sale in the vending machines?
I'm just a kid in the cafeteria and I want water. Do I have to, I have to leave the cafeteria? Is there any way to provide water? Because it says in the wellness that we could provide water in the cafeteria, but there is no water in the cafeteria.
Yeah, there is no, I don't think there's a water fountain inside of there. It's just right outside the area. Yeah, I mean, I'm thinking of the, I'm thinking of the junior, senior high school.
High school, yeah. I know there's one here.
Yeah.
Yeah. Jackie, do you have one in the elementary school? That's right, you have one. So it's just, it's just a junior, senior high school. I think it's just right outside the door.
We actually use stop fills, the twenty-gallon, or the big water coolers. Kids have little cups, they don't know what, and they can get their water.
They can get it?
Yeah.
I'll find out. Never give it a thought.
And also, it encourages, obviously, activities. A lot of the kids that are in sports, sometimes the school day ends, last time they ate lunch was, like, 10:30. They go to practice or to a game, and they don't come home until eight, nine o'clock at night. That's a long time for a teenage kid not to eat. Is there any way that we could provide snacks for the sports kids? Steve? Because I know, like, my- We have a snack program, so I don't know why they couldn't be excluded. One of my kids played football in Lions, and they gave him, like, PBJ sandwiches. I mean, if Lions could do it, why can't we put PBJ sandwiches?
Do you have an apple juice snack?
Does that include, does that include the sports kids, or is that just in general?
I'm not sure with the live tradition. We'll find out.
All right, we'll look into that. So I had, while we're on wellness, I know this, I was part of a wellness committee at a meeting today. I went this morning, and we talked a lot about the water fountains as well. Talked about water available for the wellness committee, as far as them having them in their offices for not only the students, but the staff. Our wellness is also geared towards the staff. They raise their own money for that. Is that true? That's the way I understood it? So just some things to keep-
Staff does?
Yeah, for, like, the water, like, within their offices and stuff, yeah. It comes out of their own. They pay into-
$20.
Yeah, oh, it's, so you say it's part of dress-down variety, to put your dollar in a jar, gotcha, so the money goes back to the wellness committee. I like it. Okay. All right, so that's, we're good there. We'll go on to consensus motion number one. Do we have a motion to approve? Jeff?
Second.
Brian, second. All in favor? Any opposed? Any abstained? Do we have a motion to approve consensus motion number two? Jim, do we have a second?
Second.
Brian, all in favor? Any opposed? Any abstained? Carried. Any other public, no other public participation? Do we have a motion to approve consensus motion number three? Jeff, motion. Jim, second. All in favor? Any opposed? Any abstained? Nelson, can you set our agenda for next meeting, please?
Oh, yeah, it's a February meeting. We will have the regents and midterm results, because that'll be happening in, not next week, the week after. And we're also, as I mentioned at the beginning of the year, we're going to do a student attendance mid-year recap to look at how our attendance numbers are for our students across the district, specifically looking at chronic attendance, which will be roughly around absent nine or more days. A quick question for the board. When we, when we provide that information about the chronic attendance, what other crosscategories would you, would you like us to include in that report? Would you like us to include, for instance, the students that are on there, how they're doing academically in terms of class passing, I'm assuming? Is there any other particular?
Is there? So absenteeism also can be caused due to behavior. So sometimes, they're just not there because they're sick, and sometimes, they're not there because they can't behave.
So you want us to look at, we can look at how they're doing in terms of, I mean, it's a little bit, it's a little bit, it's a little bit more difficult to do, like, in the elementary intermediate, but we could, we could probably look at how they're performing in terms of, you know, below or on or above grade level. And then, of course, seven through twelve, maybe, Megan, help me out, four, five, and six. Is Megan here? You know, four, five, and six, you know, would we look at that different? We can talk about it, but we'll have to figure out how we look at the academic performance for your building, you know, so we can include that in there easily. We can also include what their, what their, what their discipline looks like.
Well, it's a big factor, for sure.
Yeah, I mean, it's, 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 it's pretty easy to run the report. That's why I'm asking. I want to make sure that we provide you with the data that you'd be most interested in learning about for those students who are chronically absent.
Ultimately, we're looking to see what the chronic absenteeism is doing and why it's there. So anything that you have that can help us understand that, so that we can try to come up with a way to help.
Perfect. You know, so, you know, principles, as you're kind of thinking about that, at least the class failures, or how they're doing, how they're performing academically, some of the student management stuff, and then also, if there's anything else that you think we might want to look at that, give that some thought. We have some time to put that together.
Yeah, just-
I just have a que, I'm just curious-
I just have a que, I'm just curious as to know what the interventions are to get kids back to school?
Okay.
And how successful each step is in getting those students back here?
Okay.
I, you know, I don't know if a letter in the mail is cutting it. Maybe we need to be more extreme with what we do to get students back to school.
Okay. You know, so, for those, for those students in your buildings to also, you know, look at what those interventions are, so if we can, you'd almost have to do that a little bit by breaking it down student by student. I know you have that information. It's just a matter of compiling it the right way. Okay?
Sarah, Wisconsin. Just getting back to the cause of the absenteeism, if we could include any ENL students who maybe go out of the country to...
Yeah, we do have that. We do track that as well. That's, that's, that's another good factor. So, that would be something that, that I know the principals are looking at. So, when you do that, if you could think about that lens and somehow note that, that these are particular students that have left for two, three, four weeks or more.
Yeah, thank you.
Yep.
One more. Nelson, do we still have the home liaison individuals?
The what?
Home liaison individuals?
We don't have that anymore. With all of the community schools coordinators we've had, they have kind of picked up a lot of the home visit stuff.
So, do, does the regular school day communicate with the community schools' individuals to let them know we need to go to their house and work with those individuals to get them back to school, that type of stuff like that?
Yeah, they've, they've done home visits, a lot of contacts and things like that. We can also, we can also put that in there about the work of our outside partners as well. Everybody taking notes on that? Because I've been talking and not making notes. Oh, jeez. All right, thanks, Tina.
I just have an additional question with the McKinney-Ventle liaison and the relationship with that liaison and the administration. If there's cross-collaboration with our unhoused youth and the absenteeism, because that is an issue. There's a lot of transient population in Wayne County.
Okay.
So, I'm just curious to see what initiatives there are with that as well.
So, any, just, let's recap this because I don't want to miss anything. So, we've got, we've got the academic performance, we've got the discipline analysis, we've got the ENL for students who leave, we have the homeless piece, we've got the interventions. Am I missing anything? Does that hit everything? Okay? All right. Yeah, absolutely. That's fine. And then, and then, of course, we'll, we'll have some students. We're actually going to have some elementary kids who are going to come and sing for us that night. So, as you know, we started a second and third grade choir last year, and they're actually going to be performing, is it next week or the week after, Jackie? Next Tuesday. I couldn't remember which one it was, but they're performing, so they're going to come and give us a little, a little ditty then. The other thing that I do want to mention that, that's really, really nice, something that we should be proud of, on the 16th of January, there's a very large legislative breakfast being sponsored by Wayne Finger Lakes BOCs and dignitaries. Many school district representatives are going to be there, and BOCs contacted me and asked if our high school choir would be interested in coming down and kicking it off and performing for that legislative breakfast. So, Lisa Miller has gathered a number of students together, and they're going to, they're going to actually, you know, kick that event off, so that's a, it's a pretty nice thing. So, there's some great things happening here.
All right. Sounds eventful, for sure. Are you going to sing backup next week or next month? Okay. All right. Can, do we have a motion to approve consensus motion number four, where we will go into an anticipated executive session to discuss a proposed litigation? Jim, have a second. Sarah? Sarah? All in favor?
All right.
Sarah, sorry. I'm trying to write them. All in favor?
All right.
Any opposed? Abstained? Carried. Thank you all for coming out. See ya.